It's black and white.
Hello there, my name is Lee. Welcome back to another video and welcome to timetable reviews. Uh this is the show where I showcase timetables in my collection and talk about them. And welcome to this mini series showcasing all the timetables that I got at the Brickmansworth Bus Running Day in March 2025. Now, just before the start, you've probably noticed that I am in a different room. Now, this is alright because I've still got a table that I could use to do these time series on. So if you see things on the table, don't worry, it's nothing. It's just my TV. Um it's the only space I've got. So let's go to the table and let's see what timetable I've got today. So here's the table and it's the timetable. So this is the September 2005 Buckingham Guide. So this um is quite a rare guide. Buckingham County Council never actually made loads of these ever. Um but we've got one in my collection uh from September 2005. So it's all the operators, Ariva, A&amp;A, Bastard Alive, which we'll get to later. Also shows the two dialer ride routes in the area Ham London, which is near Marlow and Bentlow. Also other places like Carousel, Country Rider, which was still a thing back then. The train operating companies as well, Chorlun Row Aether, Great Western, which was Great Western Link at the time because it was the branch lines um as well. Um other operators like J&amp;L and Jason Tours, Jeff's Coaches, Langston and Tusker, Maggie Travel, Marshall's Coaches, also the Metropolitan Library, because obviously going through Bucs. MK Metro, Moths Travel, also National Express because that went through Bucs. Red Kite, Red Rose, Silver Link, which is now, I want to say that's London North First Road. St James' Express, which is the express services, Star Travel, Sullivan, Turner's Mini Buses, Walters Limousines, which we'll get to in a minute, that's interesting. Wednesday District Community Bus and Sennett Ness. Obviously, Risborough did not come around until 2006, until 2008. It shows the map of the Elsbrough area and at the back, the Wickham area. Shows all the operate routes. Um haven't got that much time today, so we've got to be coming in quite quickly. Shows an index of all places served. And then we've got Route 1. Now Route 1, um I believe we have a second Route 1 as well. If I remember rightly, uh yeah, we do. But this is the first Route 1, run by Carousel Bus. Carousel, if you don't know, used to be a quite a small operator. Back in those days, I think if I remember rightly, Carousel was still an independent bus operator. Um I'm pretty sure they were still an independent bus operator. Um they wouldn't become part of Go Ahead until 2008. Um but as you can see, this is run born end, every hour during the day, no problems there. Saturday service as well, hourly service on that. Um brilliant. And then you've got the other Route 1, which ran from Slough to Burnham, uh which is now Route 12 and 13. Every 10 minutes throughout the day, this was operated by First Bus in Slough because it's a Slough route. And every half an hour on Saturdays, but no Sunday service though. And also another thing about it is that even though it was every 10 minutes, there was no night bus. There was no night bus. Next is Route 2, or the Blue Route 2 as it later became. This was operated by Ariva, Ailes Brida Po, uh obviously a route company we'll see quite a lot of in the next videos. Um as you can see, every 20 minutes, this used to run to Beck Grove back in the day. And and at that time, it was going to Beck Grove. Um um it was later cut back to uh Elsbrough Bus Station from Hayling Hill only, sorry, from Hayling Hill to Elsbury in 2008 when Ariva rerouted on the number nine service. But on a Saturday, it was also every 20 minutes. And there was also an hourly Sunday service, albeit only to Hayling Hill. And it was only a 17-minute journey on an hourly service, I don't understand that. Um now overnight, they didn't run also all the time because in the morning, it used to go to Ederson Road, which if you don't know Ederson Road, that is where the Sony factory used to be. Uh sadly, it's not there anymore, unfortunately. In the peak, it used to go there. Um and in the evening, it didn't go to Beck Grove. Yeah, I only went to Beck Grove until about six o'clock, but there was night buses on the route. Next up is another Route 2. This was a school bus variant from Downley to the Missbourne School in Great Missin, operated by Carousel Bus. As you can see, two trips. Uh what it did was it went to, left High Wycombe, went to Down, Great Missenden, and back. And it did the same in the afternoon. Uh it's the Saturday service, don't know why it's uh off the page, but oh well. And then it shows the other Route 2 again, I don't know why it does that. Then Route 3. Route 3 was an interesting route. It's now Route 78 in Tresham. And it was operated by a company called Jason Tours, who were based in Cranford in Middlesex. Um they're a company that specialised um in minibuses. They had a lot of minibuses. Same for one of the other operators, Turners. Um now this operator sadly, unfortunately, no longer exists. Turners and Jason Tours ceased in, I believe, both in 2010, I believe. Um unfortunately. Um but Route 3 was a managed to find a early service, an hourly service, early from 9:45 to 13:45 from Great Hivings. It's now Route 78 and 79, run by Carousel, which will, there will be massive changes in the next couple of years. I haven't bought more of that one yet then. Then we had the other Route 3, which was a route from High Wycombe to Pen, school bus run by Carousel. Then you also had the third Route 3. Um this was a school bus run by another company, Jeff's. Now Jeff's are based in Brackley, I want to say. I think they were based in Brackley. But I could be wrong, it could be Buckingham. But the operator itself, they operated this service, Route 3, from Amersburg to Blackford, Oakleigh, Longcrandon, Shapleton, Ithf, Werman Hall, up to Oxford to all the private schools. It used to take about an hour to get there and you didn't get home. And if you were on the bus all the way from the first stop at Oxford High School on the Banbury Road, and you were going all the way to the Five Arches School in Amersham, you wouldn't be home until like 20 to 6. It's better than mine, obviously, you finish about five past four. Then you had another Route 3, four Route 3s, ladies and gents. I know, interesting. This run from Rex Park Hospital to Burnham, every half an hour on that. It did go to, albeit it only went to Burnham four times in the evening. The rest of the day terminated in Whittington Road, which I think is something else. But it was an hourly Sunday service, I believe. But there was always this thing, Sunday evening buses. Why do you need it? I don't understand it at all. And then Route 4. Now Route 4 is a route of its own. Um this used to run from uh Allen Road at Cornbrook Drive through Hartwell Park and Bedendle Farm, Trussell Avenue, Taylor Road, up to the bus station and up to Cobbit. Ariva ran this. Um bear in mind, this was actually during the time when the route was actually doing a slightly different route. Because it wasn't going to Manival School, it was going to Corn, it was going around the South Court area. Seems weird, I know. But it ran every half an hour that route. It was not the best. They don't later revouted it, thank God. I mean, every 20 minutes. Then Route 4, the Tresham High Wycombe Route. There was actually two Tresham High Wycombe routes at the time. Route 4 and Route 52, I want to say. Um but the route itself was a half hourly service throughout the day. It went to Pond Park. However, the evening services were as contracted out to Buckingham County Council. It was still run by Carousel, however, it was under contract because apparently Carousel wouldn't want to do it otherwise. Saturday, the Sunday service was fully done, under contract. Um same for the evening bus because there was an evening bus from High Wycombe bus station. Most of the day, they started in the afternoon. They all started at the hospital. Don't know why. It was weird and it's unnecessary. Next, 558, Maidenhead Langley, run by First again, by Burnham. Hourly service on both. Um just the same way around Burnham. Good. Um was there a night bus? Yes, there was actually, from Private Estate, not from Maidenhead though. Uh Maidenhead to Slough is now Route 6, run by First again. Saturdays, basically the same. And on Sundays, when it's on Private Estate to Langley only, hourly service on Route 5 with evening buses. Like, I don't understand why people think evening services on a Sunday is a good idea. And then Route 6. Now Route 6 is another one of these Jeff's routes. It was a college bus, left Buckland about quarter past seven in the morning. He got to the Oxford Chorlun College in Banbury, 8:45. Leave at 16:55. If you were going all the way from there to Buckingham, this route went via Evelyn Mixbury, Hife, uh Bister, Lawnton, Staple Claden, and up to the Tesco's. Um so it was practically more or less an 18 bus, more like. Uh if you were on that all the way from Banbury, you didn't get to Buckingham until about 23 minutes past 6. It was stupid. Then the number nine, the Red Route 9. Now the number nine. How can I put this? At that time, it says this, "The Red Route 9 has been specially branded as an approved quality corridor route." Yeah, it was great. And it was, every 10 minutes throughout the day. Obviously nowadays, Red Rose travelled on this, of course, uh Ariva running at the time using darts. But it had night buses, it had the night bus service, which got withdrawn a couple of years ago. It even had a every 10 minutes service in, on Saturdays. And on Sundays, hourly service. I think it was combining with the number two, so it only needed one bus. And then the 11 and 12. Now, I've said this in before in the Elsbury God one, you know, on episode two. Um at that time, the 11 and the 12, who were now the 111112, were actually run by Moths Travel. Now, at that time, it was still run by Moths. I'll just show it again. It was quite interesting. It was a interesting situation because as you can see, there was two trips in the morning from Oakleigh, one of them terminating Hatton. And the other ones went further to Ford. Note though, it says TW, which means they go for the waitress and question take. And then if it was a Saturday, or Monday, sorry, there would have been a 9:30. If it was not, if it was a Tuesday or Thursday, it was the 12, all the way to British Risborough. Uh Moths Travel don't run public buses anymore. They still do exist, but they don't run public bus services anymore. The last one they ran, the 118, got withdrawn a couple of years ago. Then Route 13, which was the Tuesday, Thursday route to British Risborough, uh to Tain, just that. And then Route 14. Now, this was not run by Moths. This was a Tain to Oxford service run by another operator, Hayfordian. Now, Hayfordian ceased two years ago now. Um but it used to run Monday to Saturday. You leave Tain at 24 minutes past nine. You got to Oxford, this went via Longcrandon, Brill, Oakleigh, actually um then Ballsdo, Horson Constanley, Beckley, Headington, and terminated in Oxford, so all gates. It seems a bit off because it's, it's an all gates. You arrived at 10:42 and you leave at half past one, so you had a few hours in Oxford. Um Hayfordian at that time were probably using coaches, however, in their latter days on public bus network, which they used to do until about 2014. Um they used to use Optair soluses on that, same with Moths. Moths used to have two particular soluses, MAO7 and MBO7 bus. And MAO7 bus then actually moved to Star Travel for a while. Um I don't know what's happened to it now, unfortunately. Then Route 15, which was another one of these Moths routes, Wednesday, Friday, so late, Chinna to Aylesbury. Hmm, I know, brilliant. Then Route 16. Now Route 16 at the time was run by Ariva. Um and it used to run about hourly, most of the day to just the Quinton only. This is the summary timetable, there was another timetable shortly. Um but as you can see, most of the day, it was even a couple of times a day, Saturday service. Brilliant, of course. But there was no Sunday service on this route though. Next, this is 16, 17, and 18. Now, these routes, in the last time we showcased this, had three operators, Ariva, Grant Palmer, and Star Travel. Now, the tables have turned, it's all Ariva. Um unfortunately, Grant Palmer ceased operating in Aylesbury in around 2004. Um 2004 was that, in their last year, they operated in Aylesbury. But if you don't know Route 16 and 17, Route 16 was the main time service. The 17 was a once-a-day school bus that just went to Claydon's, double A in Calvin. Route 18, on the other hand, was the Buckingham and Bister route, which at the time was still run by Ariva. Uh at that time in 2004, it was actually run by Grant Palmer. Um obviously nowadays, in 2012, Ariva lost the 18, so it's the Langston and Tusker, who we will mention later in this video because they do have a few routes. Um Saturday service as well. Uh most of the day went to Bister as well. Then the 1331. Now, these aren't actually Buckingham and Shrews. These were actually Harpshire routes. Don't know why they were included in this, but they were Ariva operated these at the time. Um and as you can see, it was interesting. It's the 1331 only, not the 29, uh from Burghamstead to Hamel Hempstead, run by uh in the latter days, it was run by Red Eagle. Sadly, these routes don't exist anymore. They got withdrawn last two years ago now. Um right at the same time, it's a little gyms route actually, in Burghamstead. But as you can see, interesting service. As you see, they're really nice routes. Unfortunately, I never got to ride them though because they're so unfortunate, awkward. Then Route 30. Now, Route 30, we showcased in the previous video. It was run by Chorlun and Alstom Services. This route actually lasted quite longer than the rest. Hmm, screw's me. Um getting withdrawn um quite late actually. I think it got withdrawn in 2014, if I remember rightly. Um Oakleigh to Bister once a day on a Friday. Yeah, nice and easy. Route 32 next, um run by Jeff's, town bus in Buckingham, run from 9:10 to 16:10 Monday to Friday and 9:10 to 12:10 on a Saturday. Then the 31, which was the specialised brand in High Wycombe, uh the green route. But there's a problem. There was no Route 30 at the time, as you probably just noticed. Instead, Route 31 used to go to Downley. Instead, uh it was every 15 minutes throughout the day, which fine, yeah, okay, I can understand. And there's a river High Wycombe, they don't really like running stuff. Um but yeah, during the day. And it was even a hourly Sunday service. Fantastic. Then the 32, 32A. Now these, this route actually lasted again quite long, actually. This actually got withdrawn in 2014 when X60 was launched, now the X6. However, at that time, Ariva won't run in it. MK Metro won't run in this. It was run by Jeff's. Yeah, I know. Uh 32A was a couple of times a day from Grawcot, as you can see, two hourly service on that. There was a, oh no, there was a 1482. Um both routes were, and the 32s were hourly throughout the day from Buckingham to Bletchley. Note though, the only ones at, ones a day also went to Walton Campus, which is, I believe, is now the Open University. And Saturday service as well. And on a Saturday, when it was just Route 32, it was an hourly service throughout the day. Brilliant, that was. Then Route 33, Top Wish Castlefield, the Red Route, of course. This was every 10 minutes throughout the day. Obviously, Carousel still runs this to this day. Route 31 still exists as well, but it doesn't go to Downey anymore. Uh Saturdays, the same, and a half only on Sundays. Then we had this interesting route, the 33133. Now, this was run by both, let me just check, Jeff's with the JC one, that's once a day on a Tuesday. Um one, but the thing is though, is that it went, left Walter Stratford, got there at 9:45 at Buckingham, then it'd go at nine, 10 o'clock, straight to Brackley. And you can spend two hours in Brackley, go back to Buckingham 1305 as well. Alternatively, you could also, on a Tuesday, stay in Walter Stratford. Because what it would do is, the bus would go back running service. And what it would do is, is that it would then go back to Buckingham, pick up the people going back towards Stratford, then go to Brackley, then go back. So you could actually have a day either in Brackley or in Buckingham. Then Route 4, um and then there was the 133, which was a once-a-day bus, run by Country Rider on a Friday. Um left 9:30, got to Buckingham 10 o'clock, and the return was at 11:35. Uh Country Rider at the time was run by Ariva in that area. All country ride routes were run by Ariva. Then Route 36. Now Route 36, you might have recognised in the previous video. This was the Star Travel route at the time. Um running most of the day, every 15 minutes throughout the day. Um Star Travels still, still exist, and they still run this sort of route. It's Route 2E. Um and that runs every half, every hour most of the day. And then Route 48, operated by Sennett Ness, Oakleigh to Aylesbury on a Wednesday. Uh which they still do, actually. It's the 112 now. Then Route 4 is another one of these Jason Tour routes. Um they actually ran this for quite a while, actually, Jason Tours. Um so yeah, as you can see, it was a two-hourly service throughout the day from Hennessy to Langley of our Slough and Rex Park Hospital. And then we got the 4142, which was run by four different operators. Those being Ariva, Hayfordian, Sennett Ness, and Langston and Tusker. So it was really a summary service. Route 42 was run by Langston and Tusker. Then was the 612 run by Hayfordian. 619 was Sennett Ness, 18 was Ariva, 41 was Langston. So basically, the Hayfordians and the Sennettners were basically school buses. And on a Saturday, the only operator around, apart from once a day on uh Langston, was Route 18, run by Ariva. And then Route 43. Now, this ran from the Staple Claden Garage at 9:30 and used to go to Northampton. This used to run on the first Wednesday of the month. However, you can only use the service if you were actually going to Northampton. I might have said that before, actually. You used to pick up in Vicarage Lane, West Street in Staple Claden, Calvin, Chalston, Twiggford, and then Northampton Street. On the way back, you start at the square at half past one. You had about three hours there. You got back to the garage at 14:37. Langston and Tusker ran that. Um screw's me. Then Route 44, uh Country Rider, Jeff's and Langston ran this. Uh Route 44, Monday to Friday was run by Langston. 69 was once a week on a Wednesday, run by Jeff's and one party as well, which we'll get to later. But the only operator that ran on a Saturday was actually Langston. So well done, Langston, who ran the 44 from Langston Law, which had nothing else for the rest of the week to Buckingham and back. Brilliant. Uh 4849, Jeff's and Langston ran this. Um Langston ran on a Saturday, Jeff's ran on a Tuesday. Once a day this way. Now, I have just noticed the times, I'm gonna have to be quick. Uh 4994, uh Tresham to Tring, run by Ariva at the time. I don't know why it was run by Ariva. It just was. But as you can see, a couple of times a day, once a day to Tring though, which sadly, the Tring service no longer exists from Tresham. Sadly, it recently got withdrawn actually, as part of the retendering exercise, as I said in the previous video, on the Vixen video. Then Route 50, run at the time by Langston. However, Milton Keynes Metro, yes, MK Metro, the company based in Milton Keynes at the time in Winterhill Depot, operated once a day on Route 14 from Winslow to Milton Keynes Railway Station. The rest of it, there was only three a day otherwise. About every two hours or three hours if it was the second slot. Um no Sunday service. Then Route 52, Amersham to Hamel Hempstead, run by Ariva at the time, uh hourly service on that. And also a two-hourly Sunday service, albeit only in the afternoon. Ah, the uh, that's the thing. Was there a night bus though? Yes, there was, once a day at 22:05. Only to Bovernham though, which makes no sense. Then the 52, Red Kite were running this at the time, a couple of times a day. Then Route 53. Now Route 53 started to exist, it was run by Tote Valley. But at that time, First Bus were running it. And it ran from Bracknell through to Maidenhead and then to Slough. Um and particularly Rex Park Hospital. But it then had to go through Slough, went through Burnham instead. Don't know why they did that. Also once a day through Poole Street, uh which sadly doesn't get a bus service anymore. Then Route 54. The awesome 54. Now Route 50, run by Red Rose, but at the time, it was Ariva running it. However, there's a slight problem. Of course, Aylesbury area, what do you expect? It was a pokey company. The last bus on Monday to Friday and uh was actually run by Red Rose. Now, bear in mind, Red Rose didn't really run that much in Aylesbury anyway. But it was the 61A, we still didn't go through Alvar, but it went through Holton, and you know what they're like. They're very, very pokey. Sunday service was also provided by the 161 bus, which was run by Ariva at the time. Laid become Red Rose, unfortunately. Then the 54A BNC, run by the Winslow District Community Bus, who've been running for quite a while now. Um well, it's the basically the Wednesday only service that we know enough to this day. Route 58, route was Slough, Oxbridge, I hope you have an hour on that. Then Route 59, Ariva ran this from Tresham to Tresham via um Hyde Heath and Amersham. It was a once-a-day service, only a 28-minute return. Excuse me, need to scratch my nose. My nose is a bit tired. Then a summary service of Tresham to Cockbridge, most of the day run by Jason Tours. Um however, there were a couple of Arivas, but there was no Jason Tours on a Saturday. It was all Ariva, free a day. Sorry. Uh I've got an itchy nose at the moment. Then the 61, 61A, 161, uh Luton to Aylesbury, hourly service on that, not to the airport at the time. Then the 161 was a Sunday service, four times a day to Whipsnade Zoo. Um run by, it's saying run by Country Rider, but it was actually Ariva, so just take a pinch of salt. Then the 62, Red Kite ran this as well. Um they used to just do it on one bus all their routes, just so that it makes life easy for them. 6364 was run by Ariva most of the day, but the last trip at 23rd, it was run by Red Rose. Just to be an idiot. 6368 is an interesting route. This was, uh it still runs, it's run by Red Eagle now. But at that time, Red Eagle, of course, didn't exist. So you probably think, well, there'd be red light. But again, red line didn't run it. It was a company called Maggie Travel, who I believe were based in High Wycombe, I believe. And it's based in the same as it is now. Then the 65, the St Albans Hostel bit of the 65, now the 165, of course, run by Red Rose. Ariva ran in this at the time. Um three times a day, of course, Sennett Ness then took it on latterly at, firstly as the as the 65, but then they've been numbered as the 165. Then the 66, Buckingham to Aylesbury, hourly service on that. There was also a Scouse bus, the 666, school bus service. Um and Sunday service was provided by Ariva at the time. And they went all the way to St Albans Hostel on that as well. Then the 67, the Winslow Bus, again, Aylesbury route, no need to worry about that. Um same for the 68, the Winslow West Quot Centre's route, but on the first, first and the third went Thursday this time, not the second and fourth, like it is at the moment. Then the 69, Jeff's ran this, famous to Buckingham and Northampton on a Wednesday. So you always could get to Northampton. Not always by Langston, but by Jeff's. I know. I know. Then the seventy-one, which was an interesting service, two morning journeys in the morning to the Great Pass, I mean, certainly factory. Then the seventy-four, High Wycombe, Slough, which was at the time was run by three operators, it was run by a Reva. BL was first, but on a Sunday, it was run by Carousel. I know, the seventy-four has had a hard life. The seventy-five, seventy-six, which was Mainhead or Slough, Slough to Mainhead for airport, not that only the seventy-five went to Mainhead. I think seventy-six terminated in Chipperton. Then the one hundred, the park ride service, now this replaced at a route called the Critics Express, run by Batterdale Line. So this is the new service that started every fifteen minutes, run by a Reva all day. Um, there was no light bus because park rides, Germany don't have that, I don't know why. Then the one one five, the school bus again, the late school bus, that's how I call it. Then the one two four, oh, focus for God's sake, uh, on a Tuesday, Thursday to Saturday, Red Rose ran the one two four, Watlington to Henley. But it comes a time of the day, entertain on a Saturday or a Tuesday as well, uh, but there was always once a day on a Saturday, you can go all the way. Twice actually, three, that was. One two five was run by Sen Ness at the time, free a day on a Thursday. Then the Buckingham Local Services, which was just interesting as it was, as you see, it was run by a Reva and some under Country Rider brand. Then the one five one, which was an interesting service. Um, on a Monday, it went from Norwich to Longfield to Buckingham, but on a Tuesday and a Wednesday, it went from Bletchley to Buckingham. Not sure why. One five two was interesting again, Country Rider ran it most of the time, but the one five five. Hmm, that's the postman, I'll saw that in a second. Um, but there was a one five two, one five nine, which run by, run by Red Kite. One five three, one five four were run by a Reva again. Um, yeah, it's basically the same, albeit that the one five three actually went to Great Hallwood at the time. As well, so you had practically two, which are great hallways, just two different ways. I know, they still do actually, sixty-eight. One five five, one five seven were the Country Rider routes, however, the one five five was actually the Country Rider route, Marlow to Mainhead. Run by a Reva, and the one five seven was the college bus, run by Carousel to Henley Colic. One five eight was Marlow to High Wycombe, then the one sixty, Marlow Town Bus. One five nine was a Country Rider route by a Reva on a Saturday twice a day. One six two was Ivanhoe later bus, run by Country Rider again, this is not the exact one six two as we know and love today, this is practically another one six seven. But it did run on a Tuesday, but it also ran on a Saturday as well. One six five was Boncot, Lake Beaton, run by Country Rider on a Friday. Then the one seventy was a three times a day connection bus that you could use to catch the train to London. Um, it was actually time to make the trains in London, to London, um, three times a day on that. One seven one was later buzzer to later buzzer on a Tuesday, and a Saturday, run by Country Rider, Red Kite also ran a one seven two on a Wednesday. From Tredington to Dumpster Ball, even though it was literally a forty minute journey, I don't understand it. One seven four was a school bus, that weird school bus. One seven five, later buzzer to Hertford Hopesday, run by Country Rider again on a Thursday. One seven six was Mondays only from Ivanhoe to Milton Keynes. Then the one eighty, now the one eighty is another one of these weird routes. At that time, Maggie ran it, but Country Rider operated the one eighty service. Now, the three seven seven is Maggie's travel route, but the one eighty was a Country Rider Reva route. And that connected with Beckenfield Station, not train station, Beckenfield this time. And again, you can get a train to London Maldiv, obviously from Tring, you get this to London Newsam. So you can go, uh, if it's shopping or go to work in, um, London. And then the one eight one, now this was run by Country Rider again. Um, once a day, started in Beckenfield because obviously it was coming from High Wycombe. Terminated at Oxbridge, and then it did two round trips to Denham and back, and the last trip always went to Denham, always went to, uh, Beckenfield. Different times though on a Saturday though. Then the one eight two was Denham to Windsor on a Saturday only, once a day. Then the two three one, two three two to Chilla, while the tame of Prince's Rispery, that's about Chilla. Uh, which was an interesting service, a Reva ran this, mostly every two hours, it was so stupid, there is not really a direct bus from Chilla to Tame. There's no, well, from Prince's Rispery to Tame anymore, you have got, um, the three twenty, but that's it. Then the two sixty, two six one, the Elsbury Oxford local route. Every two hours on that, but it didn't go all the time, because what happened was, you used to have an hour and seven minute connection in Tame to go to Oxford. Stupid, they really thought of that. Then the two seven five, at the time, Red Rose were running this, obviously, in the previous episode, we obviously showcased it. Uh, two episodes ago, actually, we showcased it, um, run by a Reva, of course. Um, unfortunately, that year was actually the last year that a Reva actually ran it, Red Rose will actually take it on in two thousand and three. And they did run this all the way until two thousand and. Twenty-two, I want to say, twenty twenty-two, when it was taken by a carousel bus. Then the two eighty seven is to Oxford Elsbury, the normal one this time, the, every, uh, half an hour on that. Then the three oh one. Uh, wait, three, missed, uh, no, it didn't, didn't just. Uh, hourly service from Blackwell Heath to High Wycombe, run by a Reva. Three oh five again, yay, the three oh five, uh, a route that you might remember in the London Country Guides, uh, on episodes. One and two of this mini series. Um, of course, the three oh five still existed back then, unfortunately though, this will be one of the last times we will see this route. As it, well, we still got a couple more, but as you see, looking at, once a, couple of times a day, run by a Reva, once a day by Carousel though. Uh, it's had something to do with the Chesham network at the time, I don't know why. And there's the return. Three oh seven is an interesting route, top wish drive for Hollis Road to High Wycombe, it was a, combined with the three oh six. And it was complicated as it was. Then the three oh eight, these growth route, hourly service on that. Three oh eight, three oh nine was the Middlebrook Road, Pheasant Drive route, every hour on that. Three one five was an evening bus on Monday to Saturday, or if it was Sunday, all day. Um, with night buses though, and it ran all the way normally from Bourne End to Lane End via High Wycombe. Three one seven was Mainhead, now the thirty-seven of course, hourly service to Mainhead, a half hourly service to Bourne End. Then the three twenty, now Carousel were running this at the time, again, uh, history piece and stuff, I know, but it didn't. Um, connect, now with the current three twenty, it does it back and forth in the peak. Uh, but now in this time, it only ran in the morning from Chilla, back in the afternoon, not sure why. And then the three two one, Carousel were running this at the time, this was a High Wycombe Princess Rispery town run more like, was running around Rispery a lot. Three two three, three two four was now the three hundred, one thirty services run by Red Line, half hourly on both, hourly on both routes. Then the three two six, another one of these routes that we showcased in the London, in the London Country Guides before. Um, actually, Booker Asda this time, we started Booker Asda, not at Millam Road. Uh, fifteen minute service on that, um, the three two six will actually last until two thousand and six, when it became the thirty-two. Then the three two seven, now this was run by a company called ANA, they operated this hourly, um, twice a day though. The first trip from Robinson Road started in Flagwell Heath, and there was a large time bus as well to Flagwell Heath. Uh, the company was not based in Flagwell Heath, they were actually based in High Wycombe. Then the three two seven, which at the time, the scrambler's bus was run by Red Rose, uh, once a day in bound, twice back. Three two eight, three two nine next, uh, which were the Thames Valley routes, of course, to Reading, I'm not gonna show you that. Then the three three one, which at the time was run by First, every twenty minutes on that, obviously, that's the TFL service from Oxbridge to Riceley. By Denham. Then the three three one, which was a couple of times a day, run by a Reva, three three four, three three three, three three four now, speed routes. As you see, a couple of times a day, run by Maggie Travel at the time. And then the three three five, run by First Bus, this time by First Slough, however. There was this weird situation where, because it was a Slough based route, there was always this case that the three three five. Used to sometimes get a London bus, sometimes, not sure why. Three three six next, Amersham to Watford, run by Carousel and that. Three three nine, run by both a Reva and Carousel, Carousel ran a different route though, but then we're back far, they were back far on each. Three forty, three four two was a Stokken Church summary guide, as you see, Carousel ran a couple of journeys as well. Because of course, they want to win everything. Three four five was the Missenden route at the time. As you can see, Carousel really stopped running after about two o'clock though, so it was not the best, I don't know. And then the three five eight route, that we showcased before in the London Country Guides. This still ran at the time, all the way from South, Berkhamsted at the time, lovely. Then we got the three five five, now this was run by Walters Limousines or Walters Coaches, Tuesday, Friday, run from Hamilton to High Wycombe once a day. Three six two, three seven two was the High Wycombe, uh, Chesham route, which we always showed, it was run by Carousel though, but a Reva run it as well. Um, no, no, they also went to Palm Park, it was not coordinated at the time however, so, yeah. Then we had the Chesham local routes, run by Carousel at the time, later Red Rose. And then the three seven seven again, this was a Tuesday, Friday only route, and it ran a couple of times a day. Then the three nine two, which Jason Tours ran on a school day, it was a short seventeen minute journey. And then the three nine three, now this was a shuttle bus, run by Maggie. Um, ran, generally speaking, every two hours, but there was a fifteen tender part shut, now that was run by Jason Tours on the three nine two, because obviously they were coming from Cranford. So it meant that when it got to Amersham, it then later become the fifteen forty, three nine two back. Route four hundred was another route by Carousel, hourly service from High Wycombe to Bourne End. And there's the return. Four five nine was another Jason Tours route, Oxbridge to Langley, two hourly or hourly during the day. Five hundred five oh one, hourly, half hourly service all the way to Watford, uh, Red Rose ran the evening buses however, because of course they're idiots. And all the way as well, hmm. Uh, albeit the last trip did actually start in Tring, so. Sunday's was run by them as well. Yeah, oh yeah. Then the seven two four, the Gravine Line route nowadays, course from Heathrow to Harlow, hourly service on that, at the time, run by a Reva Harlow. Seven five seven was Oxford to Stansted, run by National Express, at the time, it was run by State Coach. Oxford, but it's now run by the Oxford Bus Company, and it doesn't go to High Wycombe anymore, they rerouted it via somewhere else, I think. Then the seven seven three Marshalls around this, it was a coach, left Elsbury at six thirty, got to London at eight forty-one, and then was home, about. Thirty minutes past five, got to Elsbury, thirty-three minutes past seven. Then the two dialer ride routes, the first one was Bedlam Rider, run by, both of these were run by Walters, actually, you had to call them in advance. And Hamburghum, which was to Marlow. Then Silver Rider run by a Reva at the time, it was a hourly, it was a fifteen minute service, but only every half an hour did it connect with the trains. Then the Critics Express, which I said was being replaced at that, that time, it was going to go to a Reva, at that time, it was run by a couple of york, called the Batterdale Line. Ran it a half hour throughout the day, maybe Friday only. And then there was this weird route with no number, which was a shuttle bus to the Crawlsway Stadium for the rugby in High Wycombe. And then Winslow Bus and Call, which was run by Winslow District Community Bus on the first Tuesday of the month, linking the. He had to call them to go on the bus. Then the eight forty, High Wycombe Heathrow, hourly service on that. CC one was a shuttle bus from Oxbridge to Newland Park Campus in, uh, Chalfont. The M one was a mosque route, uh, Stokken Church, Reading, twice a day. There was a second one, that was a Amersham or Chesham, shuttle bus to Wickham Wander as FC. Then the R twenty-one, now we will see the R twenty-one quite a lot in the next couple of videos, this ran from Oxbridge to Northwood. At Mount Vone Hospital, and it ran a couple of times a day, at that time, it was run by Sullivan, but the next operator we'll see it with. Will be, I want to say, First Bus. And then the MCS one, which was a Buckingham Brackley College Bus, run by Jeff's. And then the fourteen, which was replaced at the T three route from Newcastle Longville, hourly service on that. Then the X five, hourly ser, half hourly service from Cape Town to Oxford at the time. And then the sixty-five X fifteen, which was the hourly service, to rail strip from MK. And that's it, and then there's the map of the Wycombe area, and I developed stuff, rail services and the route map. But yeah, so that is the Berkshire Guide from September two thousand and five. There we go, uh, I really hope you enjoyed this video, if you enjoy it, please like, comment and subscribe, and until next time, goodbye.